Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's regular meeting for April 24th, 2023. At this time, we'll move on to roll call.
Commissioner Britton?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Chair Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Knabel?
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three is approval of tonight's agenda unless there are any modifications. I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve agenda.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Wright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Fisher. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries seven zero. Item four tonight is open forum. This is a chance for anyone who's in the audience here tonight to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda. There should have been an agenda for you outside of the build or outside of the room. If there's something you'd like to talk to us about that's not on the agenda tonight, please come up, stand in front of the podium, and state your name and address for the record. So this time we'll open open forum. Seeing note takers, we'll close open forum. We'll move on to Chair's explanation of the hearing process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the City Council. One of the commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak must step up to the podium and give their name and address before addressing the commission. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and Planning Commission in advance of the meeting. The first step in the hearing will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have the opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comments. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed to public comments. The Planning Commission will then discuss and act on the matter. Two complete agenda packets are available for viewing on the back table. Please do not remove those items. The City Council will act on these items at their meeting on Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, which starts at 7:00 PM. With that, we'll move on to item six. Six point one is 7404 Lamar Restaurant, cases MS 23-003, ZA 23-003, SP 23-003, and V 23-003 with Mike Rose representing.
All right. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Wayne Butt has submitted an application for a minor subdivision, rezoning, site plan review, and variance. The subject site is located at 7404 Lamar Avenue. The site is guided on the land use plan as commercial and is currently zoned B2 retail business district. The site is approximately just under an acre at point nine. The site, a little background on the site, the site has had numerous uses on it. As you can see in the picture on the top left-hand corner, back in 1938, there was a general store and post office onsite. And then in 1980, the site was redeveloped. The site plan is shown down here. Oopsie, sorry. Make sure my pen is working. Apologies. The site plan down here shows the redevelopment plan for it in back in 1980 that was approved. It shows that the building, which is the same as out there currently, located here. And then off-street parking located adjacent to it, Lamar Avenue up here, front elevations of the building right here. The site has been used as a landscaping business since that time. Other businesses have been there as well. As you can see, the aerial photo here, there's some on-street parking. There's back here some storage bins for landscaping supplies and some parking in this general area. You can also notice how the site is very compacted in here. We'll get to that here in a second why that's important. And then in 2021, the applicant purchased the property. In August of '22, a patio permit was issued to construct a patio onsite, which is out there currently. The applicant has also made some other minor modifications to the building, replacing windows, some other interior improvements, painting of the side. As part of this project, this does require a minor subdivision. This goes back to compacted soils onsite. Due to the soils onsite, they cannot construct a larger septic system onsite, so they have to build it elsewhere. There is a septic system onsite currently, but it can only support about 15 persons. So a new larger system to support the proposed use needs to be constructed. City code does require it to be on the same property as the principal structure. So the applicant is proposing a minor subdivision to take the back half of 7400 Lamar and combine that to 7404 Lamar. Also, another part that's going to be, there's a remnant parcel back here, shown on the screen at 7310 Lamar. That's actually part of the farmer, Furbur Farm up the road. So it's this remnant parcel. So applicants are proposing to combine all that into a new lot of record as shown here. It's about an acre. It brings the site, total site acreage to about one point, just under 1.5. And then it's worth noting that 7400 Lamar Avenue here is in conformance with the zoning code. No changes are proposed of that property. It's going to stay residential. And no applications are under review for that parcel at this time. Which brings us to the next piece. And since you're doing a minor subdivision, you have to do rezone that property. Since that property is being combined with 7404, it needs to be zoned appropriately. So currently 7404 Lamar Avenue is currently zoned B2 retail business district. And then the yellow areas on the screen, that is R3, single-family residential. As you can see here in the middle part, what the area will look like once it's rezoned, including that half acre in the back there. This is all consistent with the 2040 comprehensive plan and land use. This area here is highlighted in yellow on the left, shows the area that is being reviewed tonight. And it is consistent with the land use plan, this proposed minor subdivision and rezoning. Talk a little bit about the use. The proposed use is a restaurant. A restaurant, according to the city code, is an establishment open to the public where food or drinks is prepared and offered to the public. To be considered a restaurant, at least 50% of the seating shall be available to the public during hours' operation. A good example of that would be like Junction 70. They have the bar area and the dining area. Half the site goes to a private event like the dining area, other half is open, 50%. That's an example here for the, for this proposed, what this definition is explaining. Here, the applicant is proposing a 90-seat restaurant with a maximum capacity of 100 persons. It's a maximum capacity of 100 persons because the building is not sprinkler. Fire code, building code does not allow the occupancy to go above 100 persons if it is not sprinkler. And additionally, the applicant is proposing a 30-seat patio. The patio that was constructed previously, 30 seats is the maximum allowed without having to add additional parking, which we'll get to here in a few minutes. So a little bit more about the patio. The permit was issued in August. The applicant is proposing about 30 seats out there currently. Again, if you go over the 30 seats, you do have to add additional parking. And it has to be parked at one stall per every four seats on the patio. So applicants does not trigger that as they're at 30 seats. Section 11-416I requires patio seating. Areas to be subordinate to the principal use and shall not exceed 30% of the square footage of the principal use. The approximate square footage of the building is about 2,190 square feet. 30% of that is 657 square feet. So the permitted patio area as shown on the screen here is approximately 657 square feet. Not approximately, it is 657 square feet. That matches what the applicant is proposing right here. All right. And if you go larger than that, 30%, you do trigger a conditional use permit. So any increase in that square footage would trigger a conditional use permit and additional approvals. All right. Section 11-416D requires patio seating with screening areas to be located 150 feet from residential districts unless sufficient screening and other impact-reducing elements are provided. The applicant is proposing a six-foot privacy fence along the property line, additional landscaping around the perimeter of the site to mitigate that. And also the reduced seating out there, capacity of 30 persons also mitigates that requirement as well. And the proposed setback right now is 43.5 from the property line. It's closer to almost 60, 70 feet to the house. The applicant has submitted a detailed landscaping plan. The landscaping plan, I apologize, I'm going to go back a slide. I also want to add on here, talking about the patio. If liquor license is applied for and is served on the patio, the patio will need to be fenced in with fencing, as you see at other liquor-serving establishments within the community. It needs to be compact and continuous. So that's another thing that will have to occur right now. They're not applying for it. There's no user known currently, but at that time, it would need to be fenced in. All right, back to landscaping, apologize. So the landscaping plan was submitted. They are showing 12 overstory trees around the patio, circled in red on the screen. There is 41 junipers and arborvitae's around the patio to help in screening. Some of these arborvitae's and junipers grow really fast and tall to really assist in that screening as required by ordinance. It's also worth noting there is some arborvitae's in this general area too. And there's over 106 perennials throughout the site. So there's a lot of landscaping going on and screening of the patio area. Also, again, I want to bring detail, bring your attention to this proposed fence here. This is a six-foot maintenance-free fence that's proposed along the property line to help in screening the proposed use. All right, parking. As I previously said, the max parking, parking to be talked about here. Maximum occupancy of the building is 100 persons. So city code requires one stall per three seats or 33 total. Applicants proposing 36 stalls. So there is a surplus of three stalls onsite. As part of this application, the applicant is proposing to add three additional on-street parking stalls located up here. Those parking stalls do not, are not included in the overall parking for the site. It's just an added benefit to more of a streetscape. Like the previous pictures on, we looked at previously, there's some on-street parking. So that's another little benefit to the proposed use. They are proposing two on-street accessible parking stalls right here. That is just like the adjacent uses. Boondocks has them in the, in front of their establishment. So it's gurlocks and the other use there as well has the ADA parking in front of the use. So to be consistent, the applicant is proposing that, the street front as well. The applicant is proposing, requesting a variance from the minimum side yard setback of 20 feet from residential lot. Applicant is proposing a two-foot setback due to site constraints. Not going to read all of them, the finding of facts that were provided within your packets, however. A couple of the main reasons why is the unique lot shape. There is a well located right here onsite that restricts the placement of driveway. And the previous uses that were onsite, like the landscaping business and stuff, did have reduced setbacks for parking areas as well. Again, all the findings of fact were provided within your packet. And a neighborhood meeting was held on March 7th. Neighborhood meeting notes was mailed out to all properties within 500 feet of the subject property. Four property owners were in attendance. Main discussion points were about future uses, future restaurant uses, what type of restaurants. Site history was discussed, what was there previously. And then parking and onsite and street parking was discussed. And then a public hearing was mailed out, which is tonight, to properties within 31 feet of the property. Did I say 31 feet? Excuse me. Caught myself there. Public hearing notes was mailed to property, 31 properties who are within 500 feet of the subject site. And also was published in the Pioneer Press on April 24th. We did receive two letters of objection, which were included in your packets up front there. And they were, will be included in the City Council record as well. With that said, that completes my presentation. The applicant's on hand for any questions and recommendations on the screen.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Britton?
Well, Mike, can you remind me? Thank you. I always forget to turn that on, yeah. With respect to trash enclosures, I believe it says in here that it's a wood-faced trash enclosure. Are we not doing maintenance-free trash enclosures these days? Or what are the guidance when we're doing developments for housing the trash enclosures themselves?
Yes, Commissioner Britton, that's a good question. So generally, we like to see wood or a maintenance-free gates because they're easy to replace. So in this case here, they are proposing to use wood. The rest of the trash enclosure will be complementing the building and painted to match as well. So it'll be concrete block on three sides and then wooden gates or composite fencing on the gates itself.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rasmussen?
Yeah, two quick questions. It appears we're going to have curb and gutter around the parking lot. Is that true, which would help minimize the water from, you know, flowing onto the other property, considering we're only a couple of feet away now instead of 20? And it appears it might all filter down towards the back of the lot and then have a detention pond or something similar? Am I seeing that correctly?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
What was the reason for this? Were, did you say there's something with the soils that the septic needs to be on the other property?
Correct, Commissioner Stevens. The existing site has, the soils are not suitable for the construction of a septic system due to the compaction of the site, which makes it unsuitable, according to the soil borings that were done out there.
So is, I don't know that much about septic, but they're showing an infiltration basin. So if it's not suitable for septic, are they planning to infiltrate us? Like is it, are the soils infiltratable?
I'm going to ask our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfington, to address that question.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that's a good question. So on the far back property line, which is not a huge space, not enough maybe for the septic, but that, that was far enough back where that wasn't compacted over time. They did do specific infiltration tests in the location of that infiltration basin and found really good infiltration rates.
Okay. And I'm assuming that just, I mean, just looking at the site between a well and an infiltration pond and a septic, even if the soils were good, there's really not enough room on that site to see on which all three of those in there is there?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Stevens. It would have been, it probably would have been very tight.
Yeah. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
I don't know who actually will answer this one, but maybe you on this one? So as far as the litigation that's going on, is any of these plans going to impede that process, I guess? Is according to, and I know how these are written, right? I'm fully aware of that part, but we also want to make sure we're doing the right thing here.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
The city has not been brought in as a party to the litigation, so we are not bound by whatever is occurring within it. In fact, I'm not even, I wasn't even aware it had been filed. I knew that there were some disputes, but the attorney didn't mention they actually had initiated it. So this, obviously, this body needs to consider the application on its face without considering what, how it might affect that case.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Mike, I have some for you. So on commission, or on recommendation 27, I think we're just missing a word. Because right now it says, if alcohol is served on the premises, a liquor shall be required. I think liquor license, so I just want to catch that.
I noted the same thing.
Okay. And then I had a question for you about the letter that we received from the property owner that abutted this. And they talk about impervious area on a site versus kind of green space. And I know in one of the later applications we have coming up, there is a requirement for how much surface area can be impervious on a, on a site in a B2 district. Do we have a requirement like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair, the maximum permitted by ordinance is 70% impervious, 30% green space. The proposed site plan here does exceed the requirement of 30%.
Okay. And we, and we've also, I think we talked about, we've also got, it sounds like some curb and gutter going in and obviously some grading to make sure the water's being directly corralled on the property.
That's correct, Chair.
Okay. Last thing I had for you was, if you would go to the slide where it talks about the patio site. So it looks to me like the paver area is going to be bigger than the permitted patio area without a conditional use permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. The actual patio area itself is 4,000, however, the dining area per code has to be limited to that 30%.
Okay. And so how are applicants and then the city to verify that we're staying within that bounds? Obviously, if there's a liquor license, then they're going to have a fence and that's a little easier to control. But if we're not going to have that fence, how are we going to make sure that we're not kind of skirting the rule of going through a conditional use permit and making sure they stay within the permitted area?
As part of this application, we are reviewing an approved site plan, seating plan. So at the time they do add additional seating, they would have to notify us because it triggers another, other approvals too, as additional parking and other things. So that's one way, we'll have to do that. And that's pretty much the only options we have on that one right now, is just to work with the applicant on the site plan.
Okay. Just something to think about because, you know, everyone likes to have a little extra space.
Yep.
And so I'm sure it would not be unheard of to be like, let's just move the tables out a little bit further and so.
One option we have thought about, Chair, is I actually, you know, it's hard to box it in, but you could take the actual chair, the seating plan and draw a box around the seating, the actual table. Say you want to spread it out, you just take the table area with the chairs and do like, to say, okay, if this area is 100, do it like that. So there's ways to measure it, just as long as it stays to that 657.
Okay. Because then my other, my other concern was just making sure if we're going to prove this, where we've got a landscaping plan in place to kind of block some of that sound and stuff, that we're staying inside of that kind of sound box as well, so, okay.
Yeah, that's correct too, Chair, because that's part of the findings for that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Stevens?
Just looking at the letter, and it talking about the stormwater piece of it. Sorry, Ryan, if you have to come back up. But it does say that it doesn't trigger a watershed district permit or anything because it's under an acre. So for, I guess, the concern of the pond filling, they're still required to show that the pond's going to have adequate size, correct?
Yep, that's correct. In terms of the city rules, we are just as strict, if not stricter, than like the state rules. We follow the watershed and we actually apply that. I think it's saying over 6,000 square feet, it's much more tight.
Yeah.
So they have to do all of the stormwater modeling for the two 10, 100-year rain events. They have to make sure they're not exceeding the pre-development, you know, amount of runoff. So all those calculations are still done, reviewed by our engineering staff, and they have found to be all in order and following our rules. Also, when they're done, we will require them to do a test on the constructed basin to make sure it's operating like they designed it. So they actually have to prove to us that it's infiltrating like they designed.
Thank you. And then the letter does ask about funds being escrowed to cover any sort of like filtration pond issues. I assume because it's a private basin, you guys will have an agreement with the private property owners that if they don't take care of it, you guys will collect the funds and take care of it. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct, Commissioner Stevens. It is required per our rules that any private basin has a maintenance agreement. And it is being actually dug into the ground. It's not like they're building a berm run, it's physically dug into the ground, so.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask a question? I have a question for Mike. So talking about the 50% seating and you cited Junction 70. I'm just wondering if, is that a normal, like, city code? Because I've been to restaurants where, you know, you're able to rent it out for a special event or a dinner or graduation or whatever. I'm just wondering where the 50% came in, in cottage, or like what is the, what is the feeling and the thought behind the 50%? Because I, I mean, I've attended parties at restaurants that have been fully reserved and I guess I'm just wondering where the 50% number comes in and why that's significant.
Since everybody's looking at me. Mr. Chair members of the commission, this was a new provision that when we adopted the rezoning and the modifications with all of the text amendments. When we did the definition of restaurant, it was an intentional provision that we felt was fair and adequate. Most of the restaurants in town have a private room that they rent out for private parties. And we wanted to make sure that all restaurants still had the ability to do that without being able to rent out the entire facility. We don't anticipate that this is going to be an issue for any of the restaurants in town. If it is, we can revisit it, but we just felt that that was a fair provision to include in the definition.
Thank you. Commissioner Knabel?
I had a question about lighting for this area. I guess I don't see anywhere on here, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry if I did. But where will the lighting be for, one, the parking lot? And I guess, two, like, if you're pulling in, you're coming down this corridor, I guess, on the side of the patio, maybe?
Yeah, as part of the- Yeah, as part of the, oh, excuse me, as part of the submit, the applicant did submit a lighting plan. That was included in your packets, there will be, there will be lighting, that 19-foot-tall downward-facing light poles and the, around the parking lot. If I can get this one, one should be here. Another one here. And then I believe there's one right there, illuminated in that corridor, the driveway access.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you. This time, if the applicant would like to approach the podium, add anything additional? Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Sure.
My name is Wayne Butt, address is 7405 Lamar Ave., South Cottage Grove, Minnesota, 55016.
Go ahead.
I, I'm just happy to be here again, bringing the excitement back to Old Cottage Grove with the Ferber Farm just to the north there. I do have one question. The two letters that came in that they couldn't be here, will I be privy to those?
Yes, they're part of the public records, so staff can get you copies of those letters.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just going through the, uh, all the requirements here, I just want to make sure we're, we're on the same page and ready to go. Yeah, the outdoor seating, Angie had a great idea, we were over there earlier today, and she said, you know, we could put the designated seating up there where all the vegetation is. I, I don't have a pointer, but if, if you go directly behind the building, there's a patio space right there that would work great for that designated seating, and we could corral people back there, and it's just a fixed space, and we don't have to worry about the rest of the space. Because I think most likely furniture, patio furniture will show up because there's a fireplace out there. So I think most people will congregate out in that space as they're waiting. Outdoor seating is, one that caught my attention, and, and I know we're, we're trying to prevent a wedding venue out there in Old Cottage Grove because we already have one, but no public address system or external music, live or recorded shall be audible from the property line, and I, I think we'll be fine with that. I, I toured Cottage Grove and everyone has speaker systems mounted outside on their patio, so I think we'll be fine there, that if acoustic guitar shows up and plays music for the wine drinkers, we'll have, we'll have a good, good time out there, so I think we're fine with that. And then, I think I'm good. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll take a seat and we'll get the party started.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Aspensson?
Mr. Butt, thank you to continue to invest in the neighborhood and, and the improvements you made so far look really good. I just, I want to confirm, because there's been some confusion of possibly having a catering place or event center here, now it sounds like we're, we're talking about the restaurant. And I just, I just want to confirm with you that your intentions are to have this, a public, public restaurant versus a catering or an event center.
Well, I don't know if you're on the Facebook groups, but it sounds like everyone wants a restaurant in this town and they're arguing for it, so, you know, Angie and I look at each other. We never wanted to be a restaurant owner, but that's what the folks are asking for, we can, we can do a restaurant. We are not going to be there in there managing day-to-day operations, but we have a chef in mind and he's, he's ready to go. So it's just, as soon as we get through City Council, we'll start digging ground. You guys did have a question, I think it was Commissioner Stevens, in reference to the septic system going on the property to the north. It's actually a mound system, so there's not enough infiltration in the ground for the size system that they actually have to install a mound system over there on that property.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I've got, I've got one more for you.
Sorry, one more. Commissioner Aspensson.
I apologize. Taking part of the backyard from 7400 Lamar and adding it to this property, we're not getting in the way of the septic or well on 7400 or its ability to function as alone.
I don't have the picture up here, but if you look at, in your packet behind 7400, there has to be the current septic and well system. The well is actually in the front lawn of 7400, and the septic is in, in the back lawn. And there has to be a designated secondary site, so if the first system fails, they have to be able to put a secondary system on there. And so that, that was all measured and, and according to plan, so we're good to go.
That's great, so we've got room to add a secondary system in the future if needed, 7400.
And to include 7404 Lamar for this project, there's the mound septic system back there, upper right corner there. So the proposed system's going there, and then the secondary site is in the far northwest corner. So upper left corner would be the secondary site for that, for that site.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If I can just add, within your packets, Commissioners, page C3 shows the secondary septic's location. That was one condition we worked, really worked hard on to make sure that, that the uses can continue, that they can accommodate two septic fields on there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, at this time, I'll open public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application can approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. At this time, public hearing is open.
Hello, my name is Sienna Seaworth, 7441 Langley Avenue, South in Cottage Grove. I just have a question, or maybe it's more of a clarification. For the parking variances, it seems like a really tight spot. Are you considering parking for staff in all the seating? Or how is that kind of determined, or where will they park? Are people just gonna end up parking on Lamar and it's already a tight road?
So we're, what we're gonna do, and this is just for everybody, not just for you. When we have public hearing, just ask all your questions. Staff is taking down notes.
Okay.
And then after we close public hearing, staff will go and address everything, so.
Perfect, that was just my question.
Perfect, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the application? All right, at this time, we'll close public hearing. Mike, do you want to take the question about parking?
Thank you, Chair. The zoning code requires one stall per three seats. So right now, the site is, it requires 33 stalls, and it's parked at 36, we have a surplus of three stalls for employee parking, that would, that number generally does include employees, that 33 stalls, so. And additionally, we did put a condition of approval on there that limits parking on Lamar Avenue. The parking for this use shall be on-site. Additional parking for the use on Lamar Avenue is not permitted. Besides, it doesn't need parking that's on Lamar, that is striped.
And Mike, the, the parking, one, one spot for three seats in a restaurant, that's for every restaurant in Cottage Grove, and we haven't had an issue with extra parking needed?
There is times where we do have complaints, but generally we work with applicants when there is issues like that, and they resolve them themselves.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just add to that, to the north where it says block, let's see, boondocks. On the north side of the building there, that's, that's gonna be a screened area, it's grass. But just behind there, you'll see, I can't read it from here, but there's a driveway going up to that back door for deliveries, et cetera, that there's probably close to six parking spots there that we could mark if we had to. But just know, there's plenty of staff parking, they have their own door to get in the, in the back, so shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, comments from the commission? Seeing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'm just getting to the verbiage here, sorry, because there's a lot. To approve, do I have to say all the different file names?
No.
Guess I've never, yeah. To approve, subject to the stipulations and conditions listed in the staff report.
So I have a motion to approve, as recommended in the staff report, subject to the conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Stevens. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Motion carries, 7-0. Move on to item 6.2, Norhart Apartments, cases CP23-007, ZA23-007, and SP23-007, with Emily Schmitz presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you indicated, the next application before you is an application submitted by Norhart Architects. There are three applications, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning amendment, and a site plan review. The area for the proposed development is what we've been calling internally the Civic 40. You might have heard that term floating around over the last handful of years as we've seen a lot of development in the area. This particular project is proposed at the southeast corner of 100th Street and Hadley Avenue. A little bit of history and how did we get here? So Summergate was the developer that first started with a preliminary plat in this area in 2022, earlier in the year. They proposed kind of a two-part preliminary plat. As you can see on the south side, the residential or single-family part of their preliminary plat development, and then the Civic 40 up here on the north side. At that time, the preliminary plat created about, about, no, it was, four outlots for potential future development. At that time, no developers were interested in the site, therefore it was outlined that way in the preliminary plat. Later on, in 2022, actually, Norhart Architects came forward with a final plat to plat just these four lots, to be developable lots, as well as the required right-of-way for the realignment of 100th Street and Hadley, which we'll talk about a little bit more in detail of how that came to be. But that final plat was approved, as I mentioned, in December of 2022, creating four developable parcels, one being for the Norhart proposed project. This project also does require a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a zoning amendment. As you can see in the current 2040 land use, this particular part of the Civic 40 is guided as industrial. As we've seen development, specifically the industrial development south of 100th Street, we've recognized that this parcel has a little bit of a unique shape, and industrial users within our business park have indicated it's a challenge to develop that way. Therefore, part of this proposed project does require regiding to more of a residential use. As we look at it from a staff and a planning perspective, buffering that industrial use to a lesser residential use with a little bit of a higher density is a standard planning practice that we do see that certainly helps to provide that buffer. So as I mentioned, with this application, regiding to high density, for this particular, it's a 7.15-acre parcel, and then rezoning from agricultural to that high-density residential. An overview of the site plan, it is a 299-unit apartment building that is being proposed. Vehicular access will come from Hadley Avenue with pedestrian connections at 100th Street, as well as down to Hadley Avenue. The applicant is proposing to meet all of our required setbacks. Specifically, I wanted to call out the required setback from adjacent residential parcels or uses. Our code requires a 30-foot setback. This applicant has worked on their site design specifically to shift their building as far south as they can. And their building is actually meeting 180-foot setback from those residential uses to the north. The height is proposed at 55 feet, which is the permitted height within the R6 zoning district. And parking is proposed as both surface and underground parking, meeting our minimum, yeah, our minimum 1.6 parking stalls per unit. So as I mentioned, I would talk a little bit more in detail about the street utilities. The realignment of 100th Street and Hadley Avenue have been in our long-range plans for quite some time, specifically in our 2040 comprehensive plan, which we're almost coming up on 10 years ago that we did our overview of the comprehensive plan. So these real alignments are not necessarily new to the area. The Southwest arterial study, which was conducted and completed actually by the county as they evaluated the connectivity specifically from Highway 61 down to future Gray Coward Island. I won't get into the details, but there were a lot of years invested into that study, and the realignment of 100th through this parcel was the outcome of that study. In addition, you might have heard us floating around South District Street and Utility Project over the last handful of years, again, as we've seen development south of 100th Street. This is where you start to see the realignment of Hadley Avenue. So this project will bring utilities to be available to actually each of these four parcels, but of course, specifically the Norhart project as it's proposed. That work will start here actually this spring and continue through 2023. And then the streets, the construction of the streets will come in 2024 to provide that access to this proposed development and potential future development on the other three parcels. And to clarify, that will be 100th and Hadley. The landscape on the project, the applicant, there's just a little bit of a buffer, trees that exist today on the eastern side. The applicant is actually saving several of those trees, so they're not meeting any need for mitigation on the site. They have focused their landscaping, of course, around the perimeter of the site to help provide that screening buffer from the public rights way. The applicant is proposing to provide a majority of the building being glass and brick, which of course we consider to be Class 1 materials. Some are between 65 and 67% on each face of the proposed building. I'm not gonna go into much more detail, the applicant's architect is here with us this evening. If you have more specific questions, she would be much more able to answer their design, how they came up with their design of the site. And finally, I wanted to touch on the neighborhood meeting the applicant held April 11th, handful of weeks ago. Two concerns that were mentioned, the school capacity impacts as well as the traffic impacts in the area. So I'll start with the traffic impacts. Generally, again, I keep referencing back over the last handful of years, we've seen a lot of development in this area. And I can say that a lot of work has been put into evaluating any impacts that any type of development would have on the area, including the AWAR, which was conducted several years ago, but we just amended and reevaluated just over a year ago. And then additional traffic studies that have come with other development in the area. Secondly, I wanted to touch on the, on concerns for the school impact. I just want to make very clear, Mr. Chair and Commission, the city, we do have a very strong partnership with the school district. We provide an update, actually monthly, to the school district on proposed development, approved developments, even looking out at, I'm gonna call it hypothetical development. We try to be as open and transparent as we can be with the schools district as we understand their constraints in their planning processes as well. So we continue to work with them regularly as, of course, our community continues to grow, and we maintain that partnership. So the school district wanted me to, they've asked me to use this platform to put out there. They are holding their second community engagement open house. It's actually tomorrow, Tuesday, April 25th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. And of course, they're putting that out there, they want residents to attend. They want to hear from them, they want to understand their concerns and have those conversations. This is being held at Oltman Middle School, again, Tuesday, April 25th, 6:30 to 8 o'clock. That school district is certainly asking folks to attend if they're able. So with that being said, there are three recommendations. So with that being said, there are three recommendations. As I indicated, the applicant is here in Norhart, and they're architect. So they're here to answer any specific questions you might have. Of course, staff is here as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fisher.
Excuse me, so until Hadley and 100th are done, what are, are there going to be temporary roads in place? Or will this not be built until after? How does the timeline shake out with that?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fisher. So the applicant is planning to close, and they'll correct me if I'm wrong if they need to, but close it towards the fall of this year and start that construction. We will work with the applicant as they need, if they need a temporary access from a Hundred Street, and we'll certainly coordinate with them on that timing.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, thank you. If the applicant would like to add anything?
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Wise. The address is 1081 Fourth Street, southwest, number 400 in Forest Lake, Minnesota. We just want to say thank you for having us here. We're excited to hopefully be part of Cottage Grove, Norhart. Just to give you just a focus on who we are, is we put our residents first. They're important, that's why we're here, and we're trying to create a better life, a better way with our developments. We really look at creating community for them, creating convenience and luxury amenities, and this development will bring that to them. We also, as Norhart, we focus on three areas, just to kind of give you a glimpse into our company. We love our work, we delight the residents, like I just said, and we are looking to disrupt the construction industry through innovation. And you will see through our building that that's, it's clear. It's a beautiful building, our architects have done a tremendous job, and we really look forward to being a part of the community. If you have any questions, please let us know.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open public hearing on the application. Again, anyone wishing to speak for or against the application can step to the podium, state their name and address for the record.
My name is, sorry, I've got a bit of an allergy cold going on. My name is Amy Weckworth, W E C K, W E R T H. I reside at 6943 99th Street Court in Cottage Grove. I did actually attend the neighborhood meeting, and I can tell you there were some very frustrated individuals there. And to the point where some might say they were being a bit ridiculous. But my experience having worked in customer service in multiple facets and industries is that people get to that point when they don't feel that they're really being heard and listened to. I understand, I will use the word bizarre is the design of that parcel versus unique. I'm just a straight shooter. So I understand that's going to really take a unique company to come in and work on that. After hearing Mary Beth on that evening, I believe that they have done that. I think there's some really good things about this. And that plat is very unusual. I think it's going to be really loud back there for the people that live there because currently we have the crazy drivers that go on 100th with no mufflers. And it seems like that's not even a priority for the city. I think I'm pretty much law enforcement down in that area, quite honestly, between cameras and stuff. And knowing people within the community, we text on down Hadley to let people know, even in the St. Paul Park when there are issues arising. It's a big county, I get it, okay? So I have public safety concerns for that area. Not only that, but that new development that's going in behind Mississippi Dunes. There's a lot of kids back there, and I'm very concerned about people just walking out, not thinking about stuff. I went and I actually got an umbrella policy just to cover myself. I pray that no child is hit, but it takes accountability on both sides of the coin. So I want you to know that new development, that community park is right across when you go in 102nd. Bam, now I know the residential, the tension ponds back there. And that area is not even 50% built up to my, as I've watched it grow, okay? So I don't have children, but I know there are lots of concerns, and there are a lot of frustrated people with regard to the amount and the rezoning of the schools. And I really think the city needs to listen to this. I guess I don't have specific questions, but I have a lot that I'm very concerned about. I shouldn't care. I don't have kids, but I do. So I'm hoping the city really reaches out and works with the school board because there are a lot of angry people. And that new area down there, if that's going to Pine Hill, that's pushing all those children then to be zoned and pushed down into St. Paul Park. Now, do I know, are those lower-tier schools, I'll put it that way? I don't know. All right? But we've got an educational problem anyway in Minnesota. And you can tell I was born and raised here, by the way I say Minnesota. All right? So I'm concerned about the service level, the traffic going back there right now. That's something to consider. When we look at A, B, and C, to me, that looks at a bandwidth, that's a pretty broad spectrum of how much traffic is going. Someone also brought up an Eagles Nest situation. I know that's further down. I don't want that issue dropped, okay? We've got public transportation that really needs to be addressed in that area, going down there. And the grid, supposedly we have a stable grid. I understood it going down when there was work done on Hadley, I lived there then. But it's gone down quite a bit more. So if I lived in Texas, it would be one thing, because we can talk about that separate grid from the entire North America to other grids. But I'm bringing up a lot of issues here that need to be addressed and thought about. There's already a noise issue back there. And I was basically told to paraphrase, oh, the people back there just are upset because they're no longer going to have the quiet lifestyle they used to have. That's not okay. That's not okay of a statement. And you can spin it however you want it, and I'm good at spin, but that's not a good statement. All right? So we already have a big noise issue. People from the nursery, that's been there for a long time, Bailey. But that trucking and the beep, 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 I'm, I live with commercial driver. So I can tell you a lot about commercial driving and the beeps and the bongs and everything else. But there's a lot going on already back there. So I just really think the people need to think about this and what's going on to those other plats. We've also got a coyote situation back there. Some people might think that's funny, it's not when you lose dogs to coyotes. This is a very rural area that has transformed greatly. My father's family lost their farm in the Great Depression. Okay? And then they moved to Montevideo after a lot of different things. My mom's from Kingston, most people have never heard of it. So you're not talking to a gal who doesn't understand the rural comprehension. I grew up in Como Park, right across from the golf clubhouse, the old one, and Como Zoo. So please take into consideration the noise impact. And that 300 units are going to add a lot of density and noise. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done, but I'm very concerned that people are not being listened to in that area. And those are the biggest things that I want to say. I've done some research on Norhart. From what I can read, it looks like it's a pretty good situation. I wish I could get into the indeed complaints, because there are some lower two stars and various things. So I like to read those, I can't access those. I've worked in various industries, I've managed people as well. I'm a pretty good read on comments to see what's baloney and what's not. So I thank you for your time, but those are my major concerns.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Good evening, Lori Bertrand. I live at 8388 113th Street South, and I just have a question. So we've moved, about 2020, we bought our home, super quiet, nice area. We've had nothing but construction since then, no fault to anybody, but just everything has gone on. Will there be a proposed bike path or walking path from Anderson Windows to Hadley and 100th Street? On ideal, we used to have, and I'm hoping it comes back, we used to have a path that went from 113th all the way to 100th on ideal. And then ideal now is under a major construction with development, so half of that is gone. I know myself and a lot of people use that path. And then I see a lot of people, and myself included, go from ideal down to Hadley, and then there's a bike route. So I'm just curious if, because right now, there's a path that ends right at, just past renewal by Anderson, and then we're just on the street until we get to Hadley. So if that's something that the commission has thought about, or if you could please consider, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Emily, did you want to address? Amanda?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. So in regards to the question about the pedestrian facilities. So as part of the North Point development, if you recall, 105th Street, that was started construction last year. There is sidewalk on both sides of 105th Street. There will be sidewalk on both sides of 105th Street along, excuse me, on both sides of Ideal Avenue from 105th up to 100th Street. We will have trail on both sides of 100th Street heading westbound, and will border this Norhart project as well as through that Civic Forty, as we're calling it. And then we would also have sidewalk on both sides of Hadley Avenue, again, through that whole realignment and get you up to that kind of 100th Street, Hadley existing intersection.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, one thing I'd like to add, because I think it was a very valid concern regarding the power grid, and as long as I'm here tonight for a later item, I thought I could add my input. So I had a lot more input on that and dealings with Excel last year. There were a lot of outages last year on the south side of Highway 61. There's no question, one was, I think, 12 hours long on a 100-degree day. The council actually had Excel Energy come to a meeting in August. I asked how they were going to fix it. The whole south side of the highway was actually served by one line from the hinted and 70th substation. So if there was ever an issue on that line, 3,000 homes in the St. Paul Park as well went out of power. They also came to a council meeting to kind of explain their plans. And last fall, they actually put in an entire redundant feeder line from the Kemalite Substation down by 3M that serves the entire neighborhood through a second line. So not that there will never be a power outage again, we live in a world where things can go wrong. But the trouble before us is there was only one option. Now they can actually switch to that secondary line that was installed, and it was put operational, I think, in March. So it's there, it's running, and they've, I think that was a good example of holding them accountable and coming up with a plan, and that was implemented, so.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'll address the last comment. I think that we took note of, and that was, excuse me, the noise, the potential there. And I just want to make note that, you know, as staff here at the city, we are always addressing if there is a noise complaint or a noise concern in any area of the community, irregardless of the use. I would anticipate that residential use may have a lesser noise impact than an industrial use. However, again, that's what we're here for, if there is ever a concern or an issue. But I am, I'm quite confident that the proposed orientation of the building and the buffer of landscaping that they're providing should help mitigate to an extent.
I'm sure public safety department's already aware of the noise complaints that are down on that road. But were, did, at the community meeting when that came up, was it also passed along to public service or public safety that this is an ongoing issue that I'm sure the residents down there aren't going to be thrilled about if there's another 300 cars coming down that road?
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we've communicated with our public safety folks, and of course, they're always aware of continued development in any area.
All right, thank you. Any further questions or comment? Commissioner Stevens?
Does the A U A R address noise or no? Was that just environmental? Did it say something about an A U A R being done or no?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, specifically Commissioner Stevens, you're putting me on the point, and my memory recollection doesn't recall specifically if the A U A R addresses noise directly. So I can certainly follow up.
Yeah, if you, it just might have, sometimes those environmental reports address noise. So maybe that would help, I guess, with some of the concerns, that's all.
Any further questions?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment. Ms. Weckworth had talked about the schools, and I've served on other committees through the school systems. And I feel like, I feel like the schools kind of on the south side of the highway get a bad rap, like Pullman and Pine Hill. But I just, I, I just want people to understand, like, as a district, as 833, the levels and the, the schools are, are held to the same standards, whether they're sitting in St. Paul Park or they're sitting in the middle of Cottage Grove. My kids actually currently go to Pullman, and I have had nothing but great experiences. One of my kids is an advanced learner, they have lots of programs for that too. So I feel Pullman specifically gets a bad rap because it's the oldest building and it's in St. Paul Park, and I think there's some stigma with that. And so I guess I would just encourage people, you know, no matter what school their kids go to, whether the lines get rerouted or whatever. I think relationships with teachers and with the school is important. It's not necessarily important which city boundary that school fits in, especially when it's a larger district. So I just wanted to make that comment.
All right, thank you. Any additional comment from the commission? All right, seeing no other comment, at this time, I will look for a motion. Motion to approve, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. All right, I have a motion to approve, subject to the conditions in the staff report by Commissioner Britton. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Commissioner Wright. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say no. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to item 6.3, Water Treatment Plant Building, case SP 2023 dash 008, with Connor Jakes presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, great to be with you. The proposal before you tonight is a site plan review for the Low Zone Water Treatment Plant and the Public Works Utility and Engineering Building. The proposed site location is located at the northeast corner of Ideal Avenue South and 110th Street South. The site is currently vacant with no tree coverage as it's been used for quite some time for agricultural purposes. So the proposal before you tonight is for two separate buildings under one site plan review, one building in the water treatment plant and one in the utility and engineering building. The site is currently zoned AG2 agriculture, and public service structures are permitted use within the zoning district. Moving into the site plan review, site access is located off both Ideal Avenue South as well as 110th Street South. There are two accesses off of Ideal Avenue and one access off of 110th Street South. The site was really designed for the future in mind, potential future expansion areas as they become necessary. You'll notice a large open space to the north of the utility and engineering building, and then another large open space to the east of the water treatment plant. And those would be the two areas kind of set aside for potential future expansion as it becomes necessary. And also just to note, the building- And also just to note, the buildings do meet applicable setbacks and standards. The applicant is proposing 95 outdoor parking stalls. The majority of these stalls are located closer to the utility and engineering building, with a handful located closer to the water treatment plant. Really, this comes down to the use within each building. The applicant indicated that the water treatment plant generally has about one staff member on site during a given shift, and then very minimally has any visitors. So those nine stalls are believed to be sufficient for that building. And then the greater number of stalls, 86 of them, are located adjacent or closer to the utility and engineering building, due to the expected number of visitors, and then staffing levels throughout that building. The architecture proposed for both buildings meets all code requirements. Code requires 65% Class 1 materials, Class 1 or Class 2 materials. The proposed materials for both buildings are precast concrete panel, as well as brick, stone, and glass, which matches and falls in line with the industrial proposals we've seen, as well as commercial areas. Also note that the design of both buildings is intended to complement and match existing city buildings, and as we move into the future with growth as well. And on screen before you are renderings of the water treatment plant. You notice a lot of height and elevation changes on that building, which mostly are due to the use internally to the building, but also provides a nice visually appealing structure as well. And then on screen are renderings of the utility and engineering building. Also note that code requires material breakups on architecture every 100 feet, so the applicant has proposed and met that, or has proposed the architecture that meets that standard. And the applicant's also submitted a detailed landscape plan that meets all code requirements and standards. The one thing I'll note on the landscape plan is there's three-foot-tall landscape berms proposed along the adjacent roadways on Ideal, as well as 110th. The intent of these berms isn't to hide the buildings, but just to provide some sort of visual, or reduce any, or to break up any visual, you know, activity on site. With that, I will turn it over to our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, to go more in-depth on site design and site operations.
Evening again, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. Thought it'd be good to talk through a little more specifics on what these buildings are, how the city's going to use them, and how the site is planned in the future. So on the site layout in front of you, as Connor mentioned, you've got the two buildings. The water treatment plant is a, I'll talk a little more in detail later on, I just have a few slides, but it's a carbon, granular activated carbon treatment plant. It's actually the same type of treatment we have in town right now with our temporary water treatment plants that we've been building over the last six years. But these permanent treatment plants, there's one here, there'll be a second one up by the central fire station. Those are our permanent treatment plants, funded through the 3M settlement agreement, so no cost to our residents at all, fully funded through those 3M funds that the state acquired back in 2018. There's also going to be iron and manganese pretreatment in that building, so we actually have to take the iron out of our water. We have a fair amount of iron, I think everyone knows. When we do the flushing in the spring, everything turns a little red. We actually have to take that out, because that really impacts the life of the carbon treatment for the PFAS. If we don't take that out, it'll last like two years, if we take it out, it'll last six to eight. So that will actually be occurring in this building as well. The utility and engineering building, that's two divisions within Public Works. You know, we are bursting at the seams at Public Works, it's been a discussion for quite a while, since my time as the director four years ago. And this was a really good opportunity to have some synergy. The utility division's going to operate this plant. It's a good time to move them out of the Public Works Department, and the engineering division as well, to create more space at Public Works, so we can get by there for hopefully another, you know, seven years or a little more, before we have to relocate the rest of the operations. But also, I guess, just close proximity to that treatment plant. As of right now, there will be about 20 staff in that building. In terms of the parking sizing, you know, that's kind of for future growth and such. Also, there's generally not many visitors, but engineering will have a pre-construction meeting randomly that might have like 20 visitors, right? So we have to plan for that, even though it's not very often. But everything's housed inside in that building, it's an interior garage. As far as like all the city equipment, there's nothing parked outside, no real exterior storage planned. Some of those stalls on the building are just more like city vehicles, pickups and things like that. So very quiet operation, it's generally 7:00 to 3:30, unless there's some kind of emergency that our staff have to attend to. So it's not like some kind of 24/7 operation, you know, overall, pretty quiet. The water treatment plant, there's really not a lot going on. One staff member there each day to check on the plant, make sure things are running smoothly. And once every six years, a couple semis will show up to change out that carbon. They actually park in the building when they do that, and then there'll be some other deliveries, like fluoride and such, that we have to treat our water with. So, so pretty minimal use in terms of what an industrial use could be, I would say. One thing I'll note is those trees along the eastern property line, those are kind of above and beyond the landscape requirements to some degree that were added. That resident actually at the open house asked for that to be thinned out a little bit. They didn't want to be blocked in. So right now, it is still showing that, but I want to make note that we are going to be working with them to open that up a little bit. They didn't really want to have that barrier completely blocking off their property. So we actually went a little too above and beyond with the trees, but we will, of course, continue to meet all of the tree and landscaping requirements. Here's kind of a nice visual that our team put together, that you can see the two buildings and how they lay out. That far northern on the left parking lot, that's the visitor parking for the utility building. And I really see most of the traffic coming off Ideal Avenue on that second lot, that second entrance there. Probably not a lot coming out on 110th Street, we do just have that for circulation, but really, everything's going north to 100th, so that's where we'll see a lot of that traffic as well. There's that kind of gray pad in the lower right corner, that's actually a city well. You only really know it's there, it's a submersible pump, and that's going to be a new well to feed that treatment plant, but you don't really even know that it's happening. And like Connor said, we're designing nice buildings, we're not trying to hide them. It's very different than North Point, there's eight-foot berms and big trees in the future, trying to hide a trucking operation, we're not trying to do that. And really, for site security, you don't want to hide a treatment plant. We're not there 24/7, we want people to be able to see into there, see what's going on. We don't want someone to be able to get on site and then cause some kind of trouble, because they feel kind of safe and hidden, we want visibility onto that site. For future expansion, just that little hatching, the future Public Works and Parks Maintenance Department, it is planned to move down here in the future. That'll be a later date, you know, pretty far down the road. It's not in our capital improvement plans right now, but just want folks to be aware that is a future consideration, that would have all of its own meetings and approvals and whatnot to run that through the process. Once again, that would be a big building, but everything would be housed inside, right? Nothing outside, not a lot of traffic coming and going, and really just a regular Monday-through-Friday shift, unless we're out plowing or something like that. And the last thing, just this treatment plant, you know, what is it? There's a few pictures on the right, like I said, it's granular activated carbon, it's kind of like a fridge filter. It's a lot different carbon, it's a little fancier and designed to remove PFAS, but that's basically what those white tanks are on the right, and that's what does all the treatment. It's completely silent, nothing happens, just pressurized water going through it. You don't hear anything, there's no noise coming from this, you know, no odors, it's treating drinking water. Those big green tanks on the bottom right corner, and once again, that's that iron removal. Once again, completely quiet, and it's only about once every 20 years, we actually have to change out the media in those tanks. And then on the top is just pumps. So inside the building, there are large pumps to pump out to our distribution system. Those are obviously noisy, but they're fully enclosed in the building, and you're not going to hear those outside of the building. So, like I said, hopefully a very good neighbor, we want to be a good neighbor to everyone down there. And with that, the recommendations on the screen, and staff's available for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one.
Commissioner Knabel?
Stormwater ponds, are they just for like the discharge of the overflow coming from there?
That's a good question, Mr. Chair members of the Commission. That is for the stormwater runoff for the site. So it is sized for all the buildings, the parking areas, and some of the potential future expansion as well. We are working with the watershed, we received a grant to actually use that stormwater to run the irrigation systems as well, so we won't use treated city water, we'll use the stormwater to do the irrigation.
Right. Commissioner Fisher?
Okay, I have two questions. Number one, you mentioned the 3M settlement money, that's covering the complete cost of the water treatment plant, but it has nothing to do with the Public Works or the other building, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then you said that the current building, that's on, it's on West Point Douglas right now, right? You said you're kind of separating off, so what departments are going to stay in the current building? And you said the engineering and, I'm sorry, utility are moving here.
Yep. So in our current facility, Public Works, General Administration, Streets, Facilities, Fleet, and Parks Maintenance will all stay in the current facility.
Okay. And the building that we're talking about now, that's in the current, the capital improvements that we went through a couple months ago, or whatever, that's all included in that?
That is correct, yep, that was in the capital improvement plan, just the utility and engineering building.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Britton?
For the water treatment plant, what portion of the community will be served by this? Are all of our wells going to go to this building, and then the clean water go back out? Or is it segregated in some way?
Yep, that's a good question, Commissioner Britton. So this plant will serve everything south of Highway 61. We have three different water zones in our community, because we have so much elevation. So this will treat the new well that's on site, we have two wells in the Thompson Grove neighborhood. They're just too far apart, they're too far away to try and run to here, so those will actually be sealed. And then this new well will replace that. We also have well 10 down by Van Meter, that has one of those metal temporary buildings. We ran all the water mains last year to connect to this building before all the development and things like that could happen, we wanted to do it then. So this will serve that. And then that other treatment plant I mentioned by Central Fire Station, that'll treat everything north of Highway 61.
Could you, is there a new one, or is that a temporary one that's already built by the Central Fire Station?
That will be a new one, and we haven't started that process yet. We kind of wanted to do one and the other, it's a huge undertaking to design and start the construction of these, so we are just going to start the design largely for that this summer. And you would see that before you, you know, probably next winter at some point.
And would that feed everything north of 61?
Correct, yep, that is planned to treat all of our wells.
And then it would also have the iron and manganese removal, just like this plant would?
Yep, that'll all be the same. The actual way we treat for the PFAS might be a little different. There's different methods that take up less space, they have a little higher cost, and we are a little tight on space there, so it might be a different method to do that, but it'll be largely the same plant, just a little bit larger.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Stevens?
This just seems like an incredible undertaking, so I just want to say thanks for making sure the city has clean water, because you just explained a lot of stuff, and that's incredible.
A lot of detail, I know.
All right, thank you. The city's the applicant, so I guess I don't have to ask if the applicant wants to add anything. So we can just skip right on to public hearing. At this time, I'll open public hearing. Again, if anyone liking to speak for or against the application can approach, state their name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Any additional question, comment, discussion by Commission?
I'll echo Commissioner Stevens, it was a very good presentation, it's very interesting to know what's going on about this, because I know a lot of people concerned about, obviously PFAS is more and more into the news, and we've been dealing with it for years now. So it's definitely interesting to see it kind of come to, hopefully, an end here, where we're going to get on top of it. So thank you guys for all your work on it.
It's nice to see the results of the, basically, that settlement, so.
Yep.
Very good work.
Any additional discussion? Otherwise, I'd like for a motion at this time?
Motion to approve subject to the conditions in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Rasmussen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. Any additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to item 7, which is approval of the planning commission meeting minutes of February 27, 2023. Unless there are any additions or modifications, I'd like for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Fisher, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to reports, item 8. 8.1 is recap of February and March 2023 city council meetings, from Emily.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'll actually clarify, so it'll be, it'll be March and April. However, we weren't together in March, so I'm going to go back to the March 15 council meeting and just highlight a couple of things. Chair reappointment, Mr. Evan Frazier was appointed to continue to be our chair for the upcoming year. And Rocket Car Wash was actually on the agenda for the March 15 meeting, which was approved. And I can say, I believe they're moving along with purchase of the site and things of that nature. So we're crossing our fingers to see some movement there soon. And then I'm going to jump ahead to the April 5 council meeting, kind of all over the place, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of items. Reappointment of our Commissioner Derek Rasmussen, who will join us for another two years in his seat on the Commission, so we're looking forward to that. With that, Tony Kombata is here as your council liaison, so if you have more specific questions, any items on the agenda, or anything council-related, by all means, ask away.
Thank you. Councilmember Kombata?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Frazier's statement. As we've been reviewing the plans for this water treatment facility, it has been a learning experience for me, and I, my appreciation for the passion and knowledge that our staff and value that they bring to the city continues to grow. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you guys might have. And again, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Frazier and Commissioner Rasmussen on their reappointments.
Thank you. Any questions for the council member? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
8.2 is response to planning commission inquiries, we didn't have any from February's meeting. So we'll move on to 8.3, planning commission requests. Commissioner Britton?
Yeah, it's me again. So Ryan, you might be able to answer this for me. North Point Development, I was driving out there, and there are large concrete strips in the parking lot that are kind of odd, that it's not just all blacktop, it's like blacktop and concrete, and then blacktop again. Do you have any idea of why those are there?
Commissioner Britton, I believe those are actually where the semi-trailer, where their jack stands will sit. Those can do a lot of damage on asphalt, especially on hot days, when they're parked like that. So usually, they will actually have those concrete strips there, off the top of my head, that's what I'm guessing, so.
Well, that makes sense, it was just, it stuck out, so I was curious.
Yep.
And then my second question is on the fencing that's out there at North Point. For an industrial use like this, what type of building material requirements do we have on the fences that they put up? Because the fence that's out there is plastic, it appears to be plastic. So it just kind of struck me as odd that it wasn't a more robust material that would have maybe a greater longevity than what this might.
Sure, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Britton, as a part of the North Point project, they actually proposed a noise mitigation wall, is actually what that fencing is. Now forgive me, I don't know the complete details of how those types of fencing or walls are constructed, however, it seems it gives the visual implication that it's just a plastic wall. However, there are more details into the construction and the material of it that are intended to help mitigate the noise impacts from the site.
Do we have standards on what is appropriate for either sound mitigation or just visual delineation between different areas?
Generally, we evaluate with each proposed project.
Okay.
And that was evaluated with the project.
Do we have other areas that have similar type of fencing, or is this kind of the first one that we have with this type?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Britton, this is the only one off the top of my head that I can think of, that we do have a noise mitigating wall.
Okay. Well, it'll be interesting to see how it lasts or weathers. But again, it's just something that struck me out as different, not that there's anything wrong with it. But it's just interesting to know, and good to know, why, if we're changing things and things are becoming different, or it's just an isolated, happens to be the way it ended up, so thank you.
Any other inquiries for staff? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 9, which is the annual organizational meeting. 9.1 is regarding the planning commission rules. The proposed rules were included in the packet. Unless there are any additions or modifications to those proposed rules, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I have motion to approve the 2023 planning commission rules.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Rasmussen, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Wright. All those in favor of approving the rules as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries 7-0. 9.2 is election of officers, we have two officers that need to be elected, vice chair and secretary. We'll take vice chair first. Currently, Commissioner Britton is vice chair, but are there any nominations for this year to be vice chair?
Is there anyone that would like to be nominated?
Do we have to re-nominate, Ken?
Can we nominate?
You can nominate yourself, or someone else can nominate?
If you've done a stellar job, we can nominate you again.
Is that a nomination?
I'll nominate him.
All right, Commissioner Wright's nominated, Commissioner Britton, is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
All right.
My man.
Second from Commissioner Rasmussen. Any other nominations for vice chair election?
I feel like we should have campaigned or something.
Well, I did ask if anybody was interested. Speech, speech.
No, I'm totally.
We'll get on that for next year.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Britton, I'm assuming you're accepting nomination?
I will accept.
All right. Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Britton being vice chair for this year, say aye.
Aye.